Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission for Monday, May 6, 2024. This meeting is held in person in the Millbrae City Council Chambers in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act to maximize transparency and public access. We'll be meeting here, and members may also zoom in or attend by phone. Members of the public are encouraged to provide comments to maximize time for public comment. Speakers may be subject to a three-minute time limit. If you're in the room and attending and wish to speak on any agenda item or any item not on the agenda, please fill out the speaker slip and turn it into the staff. And lastly, virtual attendees and people online can call in by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 812-1285-1606 and press 6 to speak. For future meetings, also, last thing is that attendees who require special assistance or modified or language assistance, translation, please notify the city in advance and they can make accommodations for future meetings. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And can we start with the roll call?
Commissioner Choi?
Present.
Commissioner Davis? Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Here.
Thank you. Four members of the Planning Commission are present, and Commissioner Chan is excused.
Okay. And now, if you are able to, let's all please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. On our standing agenda item, we have a land acknowledgement. We recognize the Romatouche peoples, who are the people that lived in this area for millennia. With that, we have Agenda Review. Roscoe, would you like to take this one? Agenda review, any items?
No new items.
Okay, so as it stands, we're good. So any other comments? Okay, moving right along then. Approval of minutes. We have three meeting minutes to approve of. First, let's go through December 4, 2023. Do commissioners have any comments, corrections, edits for the meeting minutes of December 4?
Second.
Okay, I forget, have a... Let's, why don't we just, let's just do one at a time, in case they have comments.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes of December 4, 2023 are approved.
Let's move right along to meeting minutes of February 5, 2024. Any comments, edits, corrections? A motion by Commissioner Davis to approve, second by Commissioner Quigg.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting minutes of February 5, 2024 are approved.
And the last one for the meeting minutes of February 21, 2024? Any comments, corrections? Okay.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you again. The meeting minutes from February 21, 2024 are approved. We are now caught up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Just to... Yeah, it's good to give each one treatment, and they all look really good to me on the review, so thank you. Staff for catching those meeting minutes. Moving on to agenda item number three, Public Communications. This section, agenda item, is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Public communications is limited to no more than 30 minutes with each speaker given no more than three minutes. Do we have anyone in the room or online?
There are no slips and no hands raised.
Okay. So covering Public Communications, so suppose that section of the agenda item. Going on to agenda item number four. This is a public hearing for the Capital Improvement Program General Plan Conformance Review. Review of the Capital Improvement Program and Fiscal Year Budget for 2024, '25 and its conformance with the general plan. And Jennifer, would you like to take it away?
Good evening, Chair Wong and members of the Planning Commission. Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the City of Millbrae. And tonight, I will be joined by Armando Mora, Senior Civil Engineer, to present the Capital Improvement Program item. Next slide, please. So tonight's action is for Planning Commission review of the CIP and consider adopting the attached resolution confirming review of the CIP for the fiscal 2024, 2025 year and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65401. The Planning Commission must ensure that the adopted city plans are consistent with the goals and policies of the adopted general plan. Section 65401 of the California Government Code requires that for agencies that have adopted a general plan shall review a program of proposed public works for the ensuing fiscal year and ensure conformity with adopted general plan. The review includes only proposed public works, projects recommended for planning, initiation, or construction during the ensuing fiscal year 2024, 2025. The Planning Commission's review and determination of consistency is needed prior to the city council's adoption of the CIP. All of the new or revised projects have been reviewed and have been found consistent with the goals and policies outlined in the City of Millbrae's general plan. The staff report summarizes the findings of consistency with the general plan for each of the program areas in the CIP. The next, Armando, will go into more details of the CIP project.
Good evening, everyone. There are six major categories within the CIP: general city facilities, recreation and parks improvements, sewer collection systems, water pollution control plant improvements, water infrastructure improvements, stormwater and storm drain facilities, and transportation and circulation streets. Next slide. I will be presenting the new projects or programs that will be initiated this fiscal year. There are three within the proposed recreation and park projects. One is the Japanese Rose Garden, and we are looking to start a design and perhaps even construct a Japanese rose garden within the spur trail along Millbrae Avenue. The next is a spur trail, which is more of a conceptual planning and study to determine where we can make a connectivity point to existing facilities and also to cover grant writing services. And the third is Central Park and Recreational Center security cameras for the park. Next slide. There are currently two projects that were originally presented to the Planning Commission. These projects are now, are, one still being advertised, and that's the Bayside Manor renovation project. The other one, the Marina Vista, a contract has been awarded. Construction is anticipated to start this June with completion in the fall. Next slide, please. Under the sewer collection system category, we have several projects. One of the biggest projects is the Lower Hill Crest, SB 4, sanitary sewer sewer replacement. This is a continuation of the work that was recently completed in the Hill Crest neighborhood. This will continue with streets farther east, such as Elder, Magnolia Avenue, Taylor Boulevard, Poplar Avenue, Palm Avenue, and Central Park Easement. In addition to sewer replacement, we'll also be doing some pavement rehabilitation at the same time. This project will probably start construction in probably the next couple of months. The next one is a, is still a design. We are looking to, as part of the development east of El Camino Real and 101, we are looking to increase the diameter of some existing sewer lines. This project is to design and eventually construct those lines. The Marina Vista Sewer Replacement is a maintenance program where we are, we are replacing existing sewer that are needed to be done because of breaks and influence, inflow into the system. It is in the Marina Vista neighborhood, which consists of Landing Lane, Oak Street, Bernie Court, Stan and Salmo Avenue, and also includes Millbrae Circle in the Millbrae Highlands neighborhood. Next slide, please. At the water treatment plant, we've got a project called the Sludge Sticker and Digestor. It's part of the process to condition wastewater. The Bajron Forest Main Replacement is a continuation of design work that had been started. This, in this phase, we're looking at the permitting as well as environmental consequences of constructing a forest main replacement for the existing forest main that exists on SFO's property. The next is a housing and lift station rehab. We are proceeding on the design of, to replace a lift station, which is adjacent to the country club, or construct a gravity line in its place. The last two are system improvements. One's called the Hydrochloride System Improvement, and the other one is the Aeration Tank. It's part of the treatment plant facilities. Next slide, please. In the water infrastructure improvements category, we are currently assessing La Pranda Water Tank. Back a few months ago, we've had issues with the water quality. It wasn't, the city was not able to maintain it, so we had to get this, get it offline. And currently, we are assessing the tank for either reconditioning, such as... One of the things we are considering is, is two things. One, to either replace the tank or see if we can salvage the tank and reuse the existing steel walls. It may be in the condition that a simple, a million, no million, stripping down the paint and then repainting it might allow us to keep it in place. But this is what this project will be. It will be primarily a design in next years. The next project is the Millbrae Downtown Specific Plan Improvements, which was approved recently in December 22. It's in the water category because there's water improvements that have to be done prior to any surface improvements, such as streetlights or widening of the sidewalk. The next is the Highland Hillsborough Water Transmission Main. This is the city's contribution to the replacement of an existing water transmission line. This is being led by the Town of Hillsborough. Next slide, please. El Benito Water Main Replacement is a replacement of a three-inch galvanized water line in El Benito Water, in El Benito Way. The next is the Metals Water Main Sewer Replacement. Similar to the sewer replacement, this is, we're doing a combination of two things. We're replacing the water main as well as the sewer. And then the Avio Avenue to SFO is the equivalent of the sewer upsizing, but this is for the water portion of it. Next slide, please. In the Stormwater and Storm Drain Facility Improvements, we have discovered that there's some issues with ponding within the Helen Drive. This is a study of the sub-basin to determine what needs to be done or what improvements to mitigate the ponding that has been exist, that occasionally will appear in very, very high storm events. The next one is Pump Station Rehabilitation that serves the SFO. And then the third is a study for some types of improvements that could be done to mitigate runoff that's coming off the street onto private property. It's near the La Pranda Water Tank area. Next slide, please. You're already there. These are three road projects. The 2023 is our annual slurry seal project, which is, is being advertised right now. It's primary maintenance, rented maintenance. And it consists of slurry sealing the following streets: Ridge Avenue, Millwood Drive, Barcelona Drive, Cappuccino Drive, and Menora Way. The next one is the 2025 Annual Pavement Maintenance Program, similar to the 23. But this one, we're looking to do Ludman Way and Laurel along the Green Hills Elementary School. In addition to simply doing preventive road maintenance, we're also going to be doing pedestrian improvements and traffic calming as well. The next one is the 2025 Hawthorne Way Rehabilitation. This is to rehabilitate Hawthorne Way to the same level of improvement that recently PG&E had done on half of the street. So we're doing the other half now. And this is also a project that's going to be done this summer. Next slide, please. The 2024 pavement rehabilitation is basically, we're doing extensive restoring of certain streets. We haven't identified which streets are going to be done with this money. We're in the process of analyzing it. And again, of course, we're talking about the Millbrae Downtown Specific Plan Improvements. These are the street improvements, such as widening the sidewalk, streetlights improvement, street furniture, some landscaping. This is, will be a multi-year project. Most likely, will probably be in design most of next fiscal year with construction to start the following fiscal year. And then our annual traffic calming program, where we look for places to implement types of measures to reduce the speed, such as raised crosswalks, speed cushions, bump outs throughout the community. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, portion of the presentation.
So staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the Capital Improvement Program, consider the public testimony and the materials presented in this report, and consider adopting the attached resolution confirming review of the CIP for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to California Government Code Section 65401. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, so for the Planning Commission, do the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have a quick question for staff. On, I think, page eight of... No, wait. Yes, page eight of the memo. Under Planning Commission Action, it says, "Staff recommends the Planning Commission to review the CIP and budget." I think that's the only place where budget shows up.
Yeah, this is not on the budget.
Okay.
Just the CIP conformance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Samuel, for clarifying that. And any other questions, clarifications needed for staff?
All I know is these years go by very quickly.
Okay, with no further questions, let's open it up for public comments. Are there any members of the public online wishing to speak?
There are no hands. No.
Can we have a motion to close public comments?
Make a motion to close public comments. Second.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
And thank you. That is a four to zero vote. Public comment is now closed.
Okay, so this last section of this agenda item, we'll give a chance for Planning Commissioners to have any discussion or comments on the topic at hand. Do any commissioners wish to provide any statements, discussion?
Only then I think you've done a great job again. And like I say, these years just go by so very quickly. And I believe, based on me, it looks like you've covered everything.
Yeah, I agree. It's a great list, but if these things start happening, it's gonna be...
May I ask, is there a process by how residents will be involved or engaged on some of these projects, if not most of them?
One, simple as well, of course, is the traffic calming, where we do solicit input from various residents, as well as we receive input through C, click, or just calls in which we, which we receive, and we tabulate and collect that information. And we occasionally do have public hearings. We do also prepare a, for the pavement rehab, we do solicit input from various community groups. One group, of course, is the BPAC, particularly when it deals with pedestrian improvements, such as ball bouts or bicycle lane improvements. That's a second source. One other project that we'll probably, we'll do an active solicitation of input, of course, will be the downtown specific, I envision that to be much more interaction with the community, because it does, it's, you know, the business core center of Millbrae, and there's gonna be a lot of close coordination with the construction once we start. There, it's a small area, we're trying to do a lot of stuff in there, water main construction. Well, we're gonna be, we may be taking the road down a few inches to be able to widen the sidewalk, also just to kind of clean it up, too. And so we've got some funds already allocated towards the project. I think we've got about, I would say about $5 million set aside for that construction right now, to do that in the following year. Those are good questions. I, it's somewhat rather informal. I know we do keep track of inputs, particularly for ADA improvements. We do get a number of residents requesting particular corners that have ADA ramps, and usually we do them whenever we do a project. Any ramp that needs to be upsized or replaced or brought up to current standards is always done. Occasionally, we'll do a few ramps outside the project limits, and we are in the process of tabulating how much progress we have been making to see how much more is left. So that's one way we do it.
Excellent, thank you. It's a great list of projects. Thank you.
These project lists are fabulous. Do you actually complete everything in a one year? But some of the things have pulled over. This is pretty ambitious.
List includes projects that will be designed, and then the list also includes projects that will be in construction. Most public works projects usually take two years.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Armando and Jennifer, for providing those clarifications. Just my own comment. Again, we're here to just have this list and just review it to make sure it's consistent with general plan. We're not here to look at specifics, priorities, scheduling, costs, and specific plans or drawings. So to me, the list looks current, relevant, you know, addresses the sewer issues on the eastern side of the city and improves our parks, and incorporates and recognizes the downtown specific plan, and make progress on that. So I'd suggest we move forward. We can have a motion.
Make a motion to, what's the word? I lost it out of my head. Approve the resolution of Planning Commission of the City of Millbrae confirming review of the Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 24, '25 and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to California Government Code Section 65401.
I'll second.
Okay.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four to zero.
Great. Thanks, everybody, for moving those along. That's good preparation and appreciate the slideshow and more details on that list. For agenda item number five, we go on to new business for staff. Are there any new business?
No new business this evening.
Okay, no new business this evening. Are we looking for the next meeting? Do you have an idea of schedule for the next meeting?
Yeah, for the next Planning Commission meeting, we will be canceling that one. So we will send out the formal cancellation notices this week.
So then we may be looking at the next one into June.
Correct, yeah. And kind of on that point, future meetings, in the packet that you all received, you should have received the calendar of the 2024 Planning Commission meetings. The meeting dates in black are normally regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings, the first and third Mondays of each month. Moving forward, you know, in the past, we have surveyed the commissioners on their availability for a quorum for each of the meetings beforehand, but since we have already laid out the meetings in advance, we'll no longer be sending out the quorum emails. We'll just assume that you will be present, and if you're not, because you have a planned vacation, please do let us know. We will still be canceling the meetings that we do not have, and we'll be doing that two Tuesdays before the meeting.
I say I like it. I must prefer a negative RSVP all the time. Can't make it, you let them know.
Yeah, just try to, you know, limit the amount of emails you all get, so.
For those of us that don't, if they'd like to have no paper copies and just review things online, if we could afford that calendar on email, we have that, too. And we can post it wherever we like. So just a reiteration again, we'll have the calendar, and then if commissioners can't make the meeting, just let the staff know at that time. Let's move on to, if there's no more new business, we can go on to staff updates, number six.
Yeah, so we touched upon some of the items here, specifically the quorum. The second update I wanted to provide is there's a Planning Commission training offered that is also in your packet. That is on May 30, on Thursday. That is on May 30th, on Thursday. It's in the Sequoia Room, 884 Burlingame Avenue, from 5:45 to 7:30. And the training is titled Building Resilient Communities. So if you are interested, you can register at the link. If you need it, we can send that to you as well.
Okay, that'd be great for us. Okay, anything else?
Just one more item. Next meeting, June, we'll be having the rotation of the Planning Commission chair to take effect in July. Just a heads up.
Okay, so one agenda item for the next meeting, rotation of the planning chair. Okay, moving right along, we have our final agenda item. Moving in record pace here. Agenda item number seven, Planning Commissioner Announcements. Thank you, commissioners.
I don't have any announcements, however. Do we have any updates on any projects that are hanging there? As such, 959 or...
Yeah.
The other one, it looks like the other buildings are all going up.
Yeah, 959 is the plaza in front of the building will be going to the city council in one of the next couple of meetings. And so that's for the council to accept that the proposed design for that area. We're still moving forward with the plan check comments. And then this is kind of one of the last remaining items on that one. So building permits haven't been issued yet. We're still working a few things with PG&E. It took some time. Coordinating with different agencies takes a while, but that's, in all indications, is that we'll move forward. The Life Sciences Buildings, looking at occupancy for the tenant improvement plans for Icon Therapeutics will be submitted in the next few weeks. We're billing plan check and billing permit issuance. So the hope is that they occupy the space sometime, I believe, the first quarter of next year. But that'll be exciting.
Is this in the Alexandria building?
That's correct, yes. The building that's already constructed in the amenity building. So the Longfellow project behind that building, I believe they're estimated to finish construction in, I think it's about a year. About a year from now. And we have some exciting tenants that are, have submitted plans for tenant improvement in the Gateway Project. Chick-fil-A is moving forward. They plan to move forward pretty quickly. Panda Express indicated they wanted to move in fall of this year. The earliest, Chick-fil-A, probably first quarter of next year. And a few other, a few other retail tenants. You saw the bank, so that'll be in there as well, so.
Couple of questions for the Alexandria building. There's that amenities building on the corner. And I thought there was another building right adjacent to that and parallel to the other larger facility. What happened to that other? Is that going to be built?
It is, it is still part of, it's still approved. And the, the property owner will build that building once they have received interest from a firm, that biotech firm that would like to lease that space. They'll only build it if they know that someone's going to occupy it.
So there's no current plans on construction dates or...
That area in the front will be used for parking for the, for Icon Therapeutics.
Okay, but in the future?
Temporarily, just temporarily, yeah. And then, once they get tenant that's interested in that space, they'll build it. And then they'll also build the garage as well.
I know sometimes these construction projects, they create, you know, circulation issues, traffic, and then unfortunately, they have to keep going back to the site to do more construction and then start that process over again. And then also, I see the other TOD projects on the west side of the tracks, park tracks. It's like there's a lot of clearing as there are plans for construction on that site, the other TOD project.
On the which site? Oh, on the west side, yeah. That is just, we issued a demolition permit for the existing buildings. It's old and and there's a lot of maintenance that goes into that. So the property owner decided to just remove the building just for, just to keep it.
So no planned construction?
Not at this point.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, so if there are no other commissioner comments, then we'll have a meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for your time. Thanks, staff.
Thank you.
Good preparation, babe.